Okay, this is a meeting, January 19, 2021, now called order. First on the agenda, we'll have the election of chair.
I nominate Andy Leonard. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, election of vice chair.
I nominate Larry Mosley.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor for, uh, Mr. Mosley as vice chairman, got a second? And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got the established time, date, place of regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend a motion that we leave this current schedule in place being the third Tuesday of the month at 4:30 here in General District Court.
So, if I might speak.
Go ahead, Chair.
I've had a lot of people complain about the 4:30 starting time because they say they can't get all the work in time to get here. I think we need to move at least to 5:30.
Would you be opposed to 5:30?
I don't mind, but I never want to complain about us going home at nine or 10 o'clock. So, I can have it to midnight if you want.
Quit talking to me.
I agree with that time, that's more ir reasonable for my schedule.
I'm not opposed, it's better for me too. I just make sure we have enough time to do what we need to do. I will amend my motion, make it 5:30.
Okay, session. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the agenda, rules of procedure.
Motion to adopt Robert's rule of order.
We've got a motion on the floor to accept Robert's rules of order.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list, we have public hearing, uh, special use permit. Lee County Court of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on January 19, 2021, at 4:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Johnsville, Virginia. Two solicit input on proposed special use permit. John and Arbor, Server, uh, I apologize if I mispronounced this. Demons, Yoder have applied for a special use permit to allow a retail store in A1 Agriculture District. The property consists of approximately 11 acres and is located on the north side of US Highway 58, approximately 0.5 miles from east and west intersections of Route 899, Peak Springs Road, tax parcel number 50-A-28.
Mr. Chairman, this request came to the Planning Commission at their December meeting. At that time, they heard the plans you'll see in the minutes there that this would be a discount retail store. Uh, it's expected to be a 40-foot by 80-foot building. Uh, there were no, uh, no calls or no one at the Planning Commission opposing the request, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Chairman, need to take public comment to see if there's anyone here who has not received the four, before the motion.
Got you. Is there anyone here, uh, to comment on this, uh, special use permit? Okay, hearing none, we'll, uh, we're open for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have, uh, proposed amendment to the FY 2020, 2021 budget. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 19, 2021, at 4:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse, Johnsville, Virginia. First, a public hearing is to solicit public comment on proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2020, 2020, 2021 budget. The Lee County School Board has requested supplemental appropriation in the amount of $3 million, 494,052,61 cents. Requested appropriation consists of $1 million, 383,533,82 cents from the CARES Act funds, $545,138,79 cents from Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, and the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. $752,857 from the USDA Rural Developments Rural Utilities Service Distance Learning and Telemedicine Grant Fund. $512,523 from Coronavirus Relief Funds, and $300,000 from loan funds for the Dryden Elementary Root Replacement Project. So, I guess we're open for comment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Pope, I'm Brian Dean, I'm the interim Division Superintendent here on behalf of the school system, asking for, that you approve the supplemental appropriation of approximately $3.5 million. Most of this is funds that came from coronavirus, from the state and feds. Does have the Russ grant and the loans from the Dryden Fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions if possible, if y'all have any.
Anybody got any questions? No.
Thank you.
That's all, wait.
Should be a little harder, it's supposed to be.
Matter of fact, I'd do it.
I'm like, I didn't come last time, Dr. Allison, so it's the second time.
Don't expect that all to happen.
No, man.
Okay, got anybody else here? All left by?
I'm watching those two persons.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, hearing none, no more comments or opposed or motion?
I make a motion that, uh, we approve the supplemental. Supplemental appropriation to the Lee County School Board in the amount of $3 million, 494,152,61 cents.
My second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have proposed road abandonment. Notice is hereby given that Lee County Court of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 19, 2021, at 4:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse, Johnsville, Virginia. Purpose of the public hearing will be to receive public comment on the proposed abandonment of an unnamed street on the north side of the unincorpated town of Rose Hill. The street lies in the Rose Hill, Magistero, Magistero District of Lee County, Virginia. Approximately 100 feet east of Short Ridge Drive, the unnamed street is 30 feet wide, runs in a northern league direction from High Point Road, approximately 762 feet. The unnamed street is shown on the civil flat of the Jerry Suzanne property as recorded at the Lee County Circuit Court Clerk's office and map cabinet AA 23. If the abandonment is approved, allow to this, to the street or to transfer to adjacent property owners.
Mr. Chairman, this, uh, request came up, uh, the request was actually sent to Mr. Smith, who brought it to the board. Um, and if you look on the, the attachment in the board package, I've never seen one like this before, but if you, this is at a point where tax maps join. And if you look at one tax map, I don't remember the exact numbers, but if you look at one tax map, uh, on the west side of that map, it'll show the road at one angle. If you look at the adjacent tax map, it shows the road at a little bit different angle. And so, when you put that, overlay both of those onto that aerial map, and it creates a street up through there that basically forms a V. And if you look underneath there, there's several houses that are built right in the middle of where that proposed right of way is at. The road that's actually used, uh, and is not shown as a right of way on there, if you look just a little more to the left on there, that Short Ridge Drive is the road that's actually used to get up to the top of the hill and, and cross over then in a designated street up there. So, I don't know if it's just, uh, an error of the mapping of what it covers over the aerial or what, but anyway, the request has been made to abandon that section, that street, since it is not used as, as a street for access up and down that hill. Uh, so that's why you see a V in there instead of just a single line. We'll need to open the floor for any public comment on that.
Okay, is there anybody here on behalf of this, uh, proposed abandonment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
Okay, I make a mo, I make a motion to amend that. Do have a resolution that, that should have been distributed, or she had it there to distribute to, um, to effect that abandonment.
Now, do all these landowners already have their markers in place when that's abandoned and it goes back?
That'll be up to the property owners to determine where to go.
So, we, we won't be involved in any of that?
No, I'm, I'm, that's one reason I wanted a resolution, though, we'll file a resolution in the clerk's office, and, uh, that will affect the abandonment of the street. The resolution states that the property will revert back to the adjacent property on the, to the center of the right of way. I'll make that motion, Chair.
Second. You got a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next we've got departmental reports. Treasury reports. Everybody have a chance to look at the Treasury report? Okay. Public expression. Anybody here on behalf of public expression? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approval amendments. December 15, 2020, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the district.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list, we got approval refunds. We got one for Robert Coffee, for refund for overpayment on higher rent. Got one for Jeff Mullins for overpayment on account, transfer station payment. And we got one for Janita Clark for taxes paid. Vehicle that should have been moved to the tax road.
Make a motion, we approve all three refunds, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve all three refunds, got a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got payroll, county administrator, courts payroll warrants issued, approval of dispersals.
Got to pay the bills, you want some?
Got a motion to pay, second, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, new business, board appointments. Uh, I'd like to, uh, like to put mine off again if I could. Like a motion to put it off again.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got the, uh, Southwest Regional Recreation Authority.
Mr. Rowe resigned from that.
Yeah.
He did. I haven't had anybody, y'all, or nothing represented.
Motion to table.
You got a motion to table, got a second? Did you say that?
Yes.
Okay, you got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got a new board appointment, Spearhead Trailblazer Board.
Is that a new position for you, Mr. Pope?
That, the, the Trailblazers is, uh, sort of an auxiliary to the Spearhead Trails, uh, or, uh, the, the Regional Recreation Authority, and, uh, they, they, it always existed, but they're in a more formal position now. Uh, I'm not that familiar with how all that came about, but, uh, they have, they have formed as a board and are asking for board, a board appointment to that as well as having a board appointment to, uh, the Recreation Authority itself.
Should it be the same person or not? Do you have some opinion?
I would say not. The, the Recreation Authority, uh, is, is, uh, in general, for all recreational activities that they would endeavor, I mean, that, that's not only trails, that's fishing trails, uh, hiking trails, uh, horseback trails, uh, ATV trails, uh, it can take on other forms of recreation as well. The Trailblazers, uh, are specifically more geared to trails themselves.
Motion to table.
Okay, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the domestic violence grant.
Mr. Chairman, you've got a copy of the letter, no fine, uh, review of the domestic violence grant, in the amount of $36,056. It supplies a $12,019 local match. This grant would be effective from January 1st to December 31st of this year. Motion to accept the grant would be in order. We do have a budget.
You want to make a motion if we accept the grant? Okay, we got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got request for abandonment of two streets.
This request was, uh, initially submitted a few months ago. The board opted to wait until after, uh, a portion of county property, some circle of property was sold, adjoining the, uh, the old landfill property. These streets are located just east of town here in the Richmond Heights subdivision. The streets have never been developed, and the surrounding property owners are requesting that they be abandoned. Uh, if the board wishes to proceed with this, a public hearing would be needed to be scheduled for the March regular meeting. Uh, the letter of request is coming from John and Patty Collier, and you'll see, uh, the two streets on there that they're asking for abandonment is Valley Street and a Cedar Street, which is basically a continuation of Richmond Heights Road, but on the plant, originally, as it was planted, it was Cedar Street and Valley Street. And, uh, the Colliers own all of the property on the, well, everything basically surrounding Valley Street, other than the far western portion of it, and, uh, the own property bordering Cedar Street, uh, running back at least on the west side. Now, on the east side, that, uh, that's, uh, that property will be the, under the ownership of adjacent property on the, on the other side of that street, uh, which is Valerie Miller. And there's no opposition from her on the abandonment of, of that street as well, on the abandonment of Cedar Street. The only thing that's being requested denied is whether to schedule a public hearing to take public comment on the proposed abandonment.
I make a motion to do that.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll hold him. Okay, next we got request to abandon a portion of state Route 739.
Chairman, this is, uh, the road, Route 739, it actually exists on both sides of the river, on both sides of the town river. Uh, the portion that, the first portion looking at be abandoned is on the north side or west side of the river, depending on how you approach it, and it actually takes in all of what is, uh, for county 911 purposes called Paris Hollow Road, runs from Tanbark Ridge Road down to the river. Uh, at that point, if, there was an old Ford in the river there years ago, uh, and it crosses over the river and comes back out in, uh, I think we call that Hunting Club Road on the other side of the river coming down to that. Uh, so, the request is to abandon the portion that runs from Tanbark down to the river, across the river, and back up just shy of where, uh, the entrance to the old horse and hunting club property is at. All of this property, um, that served by that section of roadway, uh, is under, uh, same or similar ownership, uh, same property on, uh, on all of that portion. I would advise also, the Virginia Department of Transportation has a, one, an old swinging bridge down there, uh, that they, I don't want to say maintained, uh, sometimes it's in good shape and sometimes it's not, uh, that goes across the river, uh, crosses over the river from one side to the other. However, the bridge is often in bad repair, and the same property owns, owns the landing property on both sides of the river at that, at that swinging bridge.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment on that, uh, the south side of that bridge was washed out, and VDOT has a sign there that that bridge is closed, because if you go across it to the other side, it's probably 20 feet drop. And my understanding is when, uh, these, as these bridges get taken out by floodwaters and stuff, VDOT wants to get rid of them. So, I, I don't see VDOT repairing that bridge. I believe there's been other bridges here, but I know what, that got taken out by floodwaters, and once they're gone, they're gone.
And so, again, the request tonight is to, uh, request that a public hearing be held to take public comment on the closure, uh, or abandonment of this portion of roadway. Altogether, we're talking about approximately 1.1 miles of roadway that would be abandoned. Uh, the larger portion of it on, you know, I'd call this side of the river and, and the smaller section on the other side of the river, on the south and east side of the river.
I picture.
I make a motion to proceed with the public hearing.
A partner? Okay, you got a motion to, uh, proceed, uh, Chair. You got a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, uh, both of these public hearings will be noted sooner than March, because it requires that you post the roads and advertise 30 days, at least 30 days prior to the public hearing, and there's not adequate time to do that between now and February meeting, so it'll be the March meeting before that can be posted.
Is it possible to have, uh, have somebody represent, represented from the state here for that also?
I can ask them if they want to have someone here.
Okay, next we got regional library, it puts first.
The, uh, bulk of time regional library is, is advised that, um, they would appreciate any assistance that the board could give to repair a heat pump unit at the Pennington Outlet Area. That unit needs a new compressor, uh, they have a, an estimate of $2,800 for the compressor installed. This is a larger unit, and in the meantime, the unit has been operating on emergency heat, and it has required some maintenance and some additional parts, I think, to keep it operational in that, in that status. So, I agree with what, uh, this stated, that they, that they appreciate any assistance that the board might be able to provide to them.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, the $2,800, uh, install cost and, uh, and use the pressure for the library inventory.
Yeah, we've got, uh, motion to, uh, give $2,800 to, for repairs, that's second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If they're operating on emergency heat, they're going to have a nice little electric bill.
Okay, next we'll have reports and recommendations from our county administrator. Okay, then we'll have reports and recommendations from our county administrator.
I do have a couple things.
Really?
I'll talk to you the south one first. Uh, have, we received a deed from Penn Virginia Operating Company, uh, deed of gift to county of, uh, basically what's the old fire hall building property there in St. Charles Cross from the elementary school. Uh, we used that property to install the MBO, the AT&amp;T MBO to boost cell service in that area. And then Virginia has been gracious enough to, uh, gift that property to county. A motion to accept the deed would be in order.
I'll make that motion. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now that's the deed.
And for the record, Mr. Rick, all three MBOs are in operation.
Might just drive over there and make phone calls.
That?
Might just drive over there and make phone calls.
Because you can.
Yeah.
Um, the second thing, just, just want to bring it up so we don't forget it, but I don't know, uh, by listening to discussion during the, uh, public hearing prior to this meeting, um, I do have a resolution drafted for, uh, adoption of the secondary six-year plan and the construct, for the six-year period and the construction budget for the current year. Now, uh, if that's, if the board wants to proceed with the proposed projects that were listed on the plan at, uh, tonight, with those three being added this year, uh, I think it was Blackwater Road, Slant Road and...
Seminary.
Seminary Road. Those were the, the three new ones, uh, that were added. And if, if this seems a little out of sync with you, uh, we did not have a secondary six-year public hearing last year in, in the year twenty-twenty. That, that usually would have taken place in May or June, but because of the COVID pandemic, they postponed it. And so we're actually into twenty-twenty-one, kind of, we're actually holding the public hearing for last year. So, the, the discussion on the other roads, the new roads that were added by VDOT onto the plan, that discussion took place at the public hearing in May or June of twenty-nineteen.
Now, he mentioned a cloduck, is that?
Now, cloduck is already on there. It was on, it was put on in a previous year. So it's already moving through. I, um, I don't remember the exact point that it's at, but, uh, it's, it's not, I mean, it's already locked in more or less, uh, from having been on the plan in prior year.
Having idea how many years that'll take to finish that?
Uh, just a minute, I'll give you a test. Sometimes they can move a little faster, it doesn't fall into the plan year that, that they got on here. Right now, that's scheduled for construction somewhere probably around twenty-twenty-two, begin to twenty-twenty-three, somewhere in that area.
Be completed in twenty-twenty-three?
Be constructed, I don't, I don't know what the completions date would be, but I would suspect it would be started sometime in twenty-twenty-two, probably latter part of twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty twenty?
So less than, probably less than two years to begin construction, but I don't know about completion.
Okay. When do we have to act on this?
Well, unfortunately, we're already six months into, almost seven months into the fiscal year. Uh, but again, these are new projects. Uh, I, I would, at, uh, at a minimum, probably need, we probably need to approve the construction budget, even if we separate the construction budget for the current year with the six-year plan overall. I, I don't know what VDOT would say about that, but, uh, they're already, they're already building projects with this year's construction budget, basically. Uh, usually they have that approval before the fiscal year starts. So we're, we're seven months into that year already, six and a half. But as far as the six-year plan itself, since these are projects on the bottom end of that, in other words, that wouldn't be started for probably five to six years out. Uh, you know, another month or two isn't going to, it's going to affect that one way or the other, I hope. And of course, in, in proposing other roads, uh, for the plan for this year, uh, if, if there's some other roads you want them to look at, then that needs to be done soon to determine one, uh, what kind of construction estimate cost they see on, on roads, if they don't have those roads, if they don't have a construction estimate on, and most of them they don't unless it's been proposed for, uh, improvement.
What about that blue pile of the thing, could they get a estimate on that?
Well, again, that, that's why I'm, I'm bringing this up. All three of these roads together, um, well, they're showing, let me get my lines lined up here. Yeah. All three of these roads together, six, seven, eight, fifty, nine, fifty, all three of those roads together is a million dollars. Now, uh, other roads that you would propose, i- if you propose, uh, two or three other roads, they may not have enough funding to do all of those, depending on what the length of, of those roads are and what the condition of each of those roads are, how much they have to spend to improve. And, I mean, I mean, you can understand, uh, some roads are, are easier or less, less per mile than other roads are, just depends on the circumstances.
I like, I suppose, I'd like to check that blue pile of the, uh, gentleman here is talking about. Do we still have that, that list that we had of all the roads and the total list of the roads that was on that plan?
Those, the, the old, all the roads that were on the six-year plan in two thousand one, two thousand two, when, when VDOT realized that they had been adding roads to the plan, even though they did not, well, maybe, maybe the most optimistic probably thought they might have the money to build. Uh, because of, because of the economic crash after nine eleven in two thousand one, uh, state budgets, everybody's budget just went all pieces and transportation was hit hard by that. So, uh, they realized in the year or two after that, that they simply, there was no way they were going to have the money to build all of those roads in a six-year period. And it, it just didn't make sense to call it a six-year plan when under their, under their funding estimates, the new funding estimates, they realized it could be fifteen years or more before they could get those roads built. Uh, so they, they came in and said, you got to remove projects from there. So they took them off, the ones that were the lowest on the priority, those were the roads that got pushed off. And I don't remember what our, I think our initial list of roads that came off of the six-year plan at that time, probably sixteen or seventeen projects.
No, the project down at the golf course, it's complete now, is that right?
The one in the west.
Yeah, west.
Now, that, that was a rule addition, that's not a secondary road. Do not confuse rule additions with secondary road improvement plan.
Is it done?
Yes.
Okay.
But, uh, after, after that, when they pushed all those roads off, the board supervisors at that time and all boards since that time followed with the agreement that those roads would be placed back on to the six-year plan as they became eligible with funding in the same priority order that they went off. We have completed all of those now, or, or we've not completed them all, but all of that list of roads that we had has now been on, is, is on the six-year plan.
Since I've been on this board, they wiped off a bunch of projects that they had on there. One of them was up on Sky Hill. They were going to, uh, you know where that real bad curve is once you get on top, out past the airport? They were going to reroute that road. I met with them over there and talked to them about it and then it just disappeared.
Well, now, that's, that's different, that's a safety project. The, the six-year plan is dealing with gravel roads going to pave.
Yeah.
So that, the road you're talking about is a paved road.
But it was on the six-year plan?
Uh, I, I don't know why it would be on the six-year plan if it was a gravel, I mean, it's not, it wasn't a gravel road.
But it, I don't, but it was on there, I don't know.
I, I would have talked to them about that. Most, most, most everything like that now is considered a safety improve, or improvement. And so that's how they do that with a different pot of funds. And their, their funding has changed over the years too.
Oh, yeah, it, it changes every year.
Yeah, but, uh, but, but all the roads that we kicked off the plan in the early two thousands, we have managed to get them back on. So now we're dealing with, with new roads that had never been on the plan before. Uh, these, just like these three that we're talking about here tonight, none of those had ever been on the six-year plan. And again, a lot of people, I, I've, I've listened to it for twenty-plus years, people come and say, well, our road's been on the six-year plan for ten years or twenty years and, and it's, but it's not on your list. Well, it's because it never really officially got put on the plan. They came to a meeting and requested it, but the decision was never made to actually add that road to the plan. And, and they've been under that false oppression that coming to the meeting and complaining about it got it on the plan.
And a lot of them were private roads too.
Yeah, and, and maybe they just, that's what I try to listen for in every, in every one of these public hearings each year. If they're talking about private roads, and, and I don't want to tell they're wasting their time because they still talk to you about it as a rule addition, but it's, it's just not eligible to be put on to the secondary system of highways.
Uh, we're not going to fix many roads at ten thousand dollars.
No, and especially getting less than four thousand every year.
Yeah.
Uh, there's just not much there to do anything on rule additions. It's, it's, uh...
Well, what they need to provide us with is a list of the actual roads that are eligible to be put on the six-year plan.
Any state-maintained road that's gravelled.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, I don't know what all roads are state-maintained. You might know what all state.
Well, if it has a, if it has a road number on it, it's a state-maintained road.
Yeah, I could, I, I could understand.
And, and, and I'm not...
But I'm saying, they know, I mean, they know throughout, uh, they know throughout the year how much money they're spending on a gravel road that they maintain. They know by the amount of traffic that's on it. They shouldn't have to have us, I mean, it's okay to have our approval on it, but they know how much money is being spent on that road by maintenance, whether it needs to be paved or not. So why waste everybody's time to come here and say plead with us? Why don't they just give us a priority list that they know that they're spending tons of maintenance money on and say, here, this is, this is what we got?
And, and sometimes, I mean, that is a, part of the dialogue, they won't necessarily, they won't come out and make recommendations to you, or they may say, this is a road that, you know, we could do. If you'll notice, several of the roads that we've taken in just in the last few year, in the last three to four, three years, let's say, are roads that are a good distance from their maintenance headquarters, uh, which means they have to tram graders and, and stuff a long distance to get out there to work them. And I think that's one reason, sometimes we move them faster in there, getting them in there and getting them done, because it, it eliminates them spending a lot of time tramping equipment out just to maintain that road. Uh, and, or, and I don't know if that's intentional or if that's just come about, but if you'll look at that list, several of these roads fit into that category of, of being out there. Now, and it doesn't mean that on their own, some of these are apparently, they're more traveled than a lot of people think. And I'm thinking about the roads over Blackwater. I'm sure, I know some of the roads down in, in District One that tie into the Tennessee line. Some of those roads get traveled a lot, people taking the shortcut across to get down into certain parts of Tennessee, and that happens over in the Blackwater area, some of those, not everybody uses Route seventy and goes all the way to Rogersville. If they're going to Sneadville or somewhere else, you go, you go to Blackwater and then you catch one of the valley roads and, and run them down and those turn into gravel roads. So...
Well, I understand all that, but, I mean, there should be some priority, like, you know, how many schoolchildren are on those roads that, that buses are traveling on, you know, things like that have, have to have some priority on whether they're paved and...
Well, that's, VDOT's not going to have information on how many schoolkids are on roads, they're going to look to you for that information.
Whether the bus is on it or not.
Well, but I say, they're going to look to the locality for that information to tell them, what roads do you want to do? This, this plan is to be developed jointly between the two, between the local governing body and VDOT. So, I mean, they can give you their opinion of what roads they'd like to see done, but that might not be the same ones that you would want to do. And they may have different reasons for wanting to do them than what you would have. And I, I don't know how often they do, uh, traffic counts on, on these roads. I would think it's not all that often, so it may be that some of them may need to look at and just say, okay, what is the traffic count on that road? How long has it been since you had a current count? And do we need to do one?
I don't know that I've ever seen a traffic count on, on a gravel road, on high, on some roads, uh, like I never have been.
On six oh four, Robert, they went to the end of the hardtop and they did take a traffic counter where it turned into gravel.
I'd say that. Uh, to me, I mean, it just, it's almost like they come to us with that, you know, every year. It's just like it's an out for them, or they're out. And that's my opinion.
Their year, it's like a lot.
Yeah. It just puts an burden on us that it's something we have no control of, really. I mean, they have all the control over that and they, they need to, they need to give us better guidance on it.
You don't know the things, these private roads, I don't understand what these people get, that, you know, the state's going to come in.
You bring that, Rick. They really need to give us better guidance on what they, what they want to pave. What'd you say?
I said, I don't understand what these people get, the notion that his, the state's going to come in and do it private road. I mean, it's, this is still good.
Well, and again, in years past, as we talked during the break there, when I first started there, we probably had a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, per year, going into the rule addition program. So there were projects, there were several projects submitted each year, not prolonged stretches of road. Uh, at that time, the estimate generally was fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per tenth of a mile. So each board member would submit at least one road in their district of a tenth of a mile or maybe two tenths of a mile every year. And some, they would do the same road, you know, two to three years until it got done to bring a private road into the state system. And, uh, and of course, a lot of people would even come in and say, well, we'll carry it, pave it, just, just fix it, grade it and gravel it and take it into the state system. But the state won't accept any more gravel roads into the state system, they will not take a gravel road. It has to be brought up to, to the hard surface, uh, for them to take it into maintenance because they don't want any more gravel roads. They're trying to get rid of the ones they got and they're not going to take any new ones.
So the one that Mr. Oles is talking about in the part in subdivision, what is it now? Is it broken pavement, that's the one?
Yeah, it's, once you got, uh, the town, well, the town, after several years, we live in up there, the town, uh, turned in a portion, uh, on the first, the first portion, about the first quarter mile up the hill there, they turned that in and got it paved. By the time that happened, the residents that lived up there had already gone together and paved the upper portion coming down to meet. Uh, so, but when that was sold up there, when you, when you just get to the top of the hill, about a quarter mile up there and it first levels off, when that property was sold, that was the end of the road right there from... when that property was sold, that was the end of the road right there. From there, traffic just went whatever direction it wanted to. So you had a, a property owner further up the hill that, that built the first house, started the first house up there, just had a bulldozer and started pushing the road down up through there. Uh, it didn't always have the width that it needed, and didn't have the proper ditching that it needed. But it got pushed out and built up through there. And there's a whole lot of clay up through there. Then, of course, it was just gravel and, and we maintained it with gravel ourselves for years. I lived on the first road that split off of that. So that was a separate road that the others didn't have to maintain, that we did. And there was just two of us on that road. Uh, but then the, the road went on up the hill eventually, like I said. Everybody went together and paved it down to the point that it joined where the town had it brought in under, under state maintenance. But the state did not take over all of the road. They only took the portion that, that they paved under that because the rest of the road wasn't built to their standard. There's places up there that that road's probably not more than fourteen foot wide.
So you're saying if the joint property owners agree and the road's wide enough and it's tarred and gravel, then the state will take it over?
No. It, it, saying it has to be brought up to state standards is more than just hard surface. You gotta have adequate ditching. You've gotta have the subbase has to be built to a certain standard. And, and that's part of the problem with that road right now, is why it's breaking down, is because it's, it's been there for, uh, probably thirty-five years or more. And, and the only base that it had was just a gravel base that the property owners just get, you know, add gravel to it, putting gravel on it. So when they paved it, they came in and just cut off what they had to, put what gravel they had to back, and then paved it as though they would a driveway. They didn't pave it to a VDOT standard. You didn't have the drainage that you always needed. Uh, a lot of different things like that. So over time, the subbase of that road is just broken down, and you're getting chunks of asphalt like that. You just get a, a crack. You know how it'll break up into just pieces. And that's what's happening up through there. I have been up through there in a little while. I drive up there so often. But, uh, that's what I saw happening years ago. But to, to get that into VDOT maintenance up through there now, I, I, I don't know if they'd take it in the form of it's in. I'm, I'm thinking they would wanna go in and widen it out some. Because there's, there's places, it's a little bit tight for two cars to pass. It's the best I remember. Those was on up the hill, that's where I got off. But then what happened when they, as we got some more houses around on the left side or the west side of the hill, uh, they, they applied for rule addition at that point, going around that side of the hill, and that was what was approved. That was after I sold out and left up there. That's when that happened. Uh, but they did one, they may have done two projects up there. Basically went from the, the foot of the hill there where Albert Purdue lives to the left, around, and back to Rick Taylor's house.
So on the rule addition, did we have to spend a hundred percent of the project out of our fund, or is it a matching?
No, that's out of the rule addition funds. That's totally out of the rule addition funds.
Well, there ain't a woman here that, what was she talking about? Had the road was paved, had, what's that?
She lives on that section, she lives right, almost at the end of the right fork. And they, they just paved up to a point, and there wasn't any houses beyond that. Uh, I, I don't know, I think I know where she lives. Uh...
She lived in the last house on the west.
Yeah, it's double wide, or past, uh, Eric Walton's old place.
Right there past her house, down to Rick Taylor's, is the portion that's not paved.
It goes over the hill and it's pretty steep and it, it just washes out.
It's just the one lane?
And, and so that ties the two loops, the two forks of the loop together. Uh, and at times, there wasn't even traffic. When I lived up there, traffic didn't try to go through there because it wasn't possible. But, uh, but, but the pavement on that right fork up through there is just, it's old and it was done more or less like a driveway. And it just hasn't stood up over time to the punishment it's had.
God, and sent back your corner from Mr. Slint's district. I think you asked Mr. Crucible how much you would take to fix it, and he said maybe quarter of a million or something like that. That'd take us eighty-some years to raise enough money to do that. We're only getting thirty-five hundred dollars a year. So I think we've gotta make a decision. Are we serious enough about fixing these issues to fund it ourselves? And how can we fund it ourselves? We spend twelve thousand five hundred every year on the gravel fund, which, as you all know, I'm a fan of anyway. Uh, I wonder what y'all think about, instead of having our gravel fund, that we put the twelve thousand five hundred into the rule, uh, not rule development, rule-
Rule addition?
Rule addition fund.
Well, I said, I can, I can hand you eighteen requests, and they date back to the late days.
Well, I think we have to have a merit-based system once we, if we decided to do that, which we'd have to have some kind of merit-based system anyway, on spending whatever little bit of money we have in there. But I'm, I guess I'm just saying a way to get money in there quicker is just to give the gravel funds to it.
Take two of them. Take two of them.
Either put that in there, you'd be lucky to fix one little road.
Well, so you're getting thirty thousand?
In ten years.
Yeah, I get it, but what's your alternative?
I mean, there's a lot of people who appreciate that gravel that we give them. Like, they can't wait for them.
I sent him a, 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 for other things.
I'm telling you what will happen with this guy back here, is he'll build his own gravel and pave it.
Well, you know, if you, if you ever expect the state to take it over, it's got to be their spec. You gotta have at least thirty foot driveway.
That's, that's the misconception that many people overlook when they're buying property in a rural area. They, they, oh, it looks nice and quiet, and, you know, it's all great and wonderful, and I've lived on those roads. But then, five years in, they get tired of putting gravel on the road and want somebody else to do it for them. And they bought it. It was not in the state system when they bought the property. And there's no promise that it would be put in the state system unless it was a development track. Somebody swindled a little total that it would be. But they, they buy it, and they don't understand that just because you get five or six or seven eight houses in there, that the state automatically is gonna come in and pave the road and take it. It doesn't happen.
What happens now with subdivisions, you, you get the state standard that you have to abide by. And once you buy it to those and go by the state standard, they will accept. But, uh, just like where I live, that was originally a subdivision. It's one and a half mile from my road to the main road, and it's all gravel, and I maintained it myself with my one neighbor for thirty-five years. I didn't expect anybody to come in there and take care of my road. And this is the thing people need to look at when you buy a piece of property like that. Don't assume that, you know, uh, well, the state will take it over. They won't.
If you're a good example of that- is your Aden Heights.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? Your Aden Heights is one of those subdivisions. There's probably sixty houses up there. It took thirty-plus years from when that property was sold. You get a road paved all the way through, back down to the main highway from the river road.
All the way around.
And, and that was about two thousand and eight. It was the last rule addition project that was done until just recently. Because they knew they weren't gonna have any more money. And they decided that road's been out there long enough, let's tie it back in. And they built, they put a paved road in and made it state maintained on what we call the front side, where there's fewer houses. But it did tile all the way back around and tied it back into fifty-eight. Uh, but that's happened in a lot of places. Now, now it's mandatory that if you have a subdivision, you meet the exemptions for not having to pave the streets. And most of them in our county do. And, well, we've had very few new subdivisions in the last few years. But if they meet that exemption and it's sold without the road being improved, there's a clause in that deed that clearly states this road is not in the secondary system and it's not eligible for funding in the secondary system. And I still get calls from people saying, not much anymore because, you know, we don't have the money. But in recent years, I've gotten calls from people saying, well, uh, we want our road paved. We want to try to get our road paved. And I say, you need to look at your deed because I'm familiar with where the property's at. And I've even gone to clerk's office and checked them to make sure that the seller put it in there. And I had one of those. Not only was it in the deed, it was in bold. But that's down towards the bottom, and they don't look at that part. And so, uh, it's confusing. I mean, even the whole secondary system and rule addition, it's, it's two, two different ways of approaching. But the secondary system only deals with roads that are already state-maintained and gravel. Private roads have to come in through the rule addition or through the, the owners bringing it up to state standards. And again, they can't just go out and pave the road like it's their driveway. They have to make sure it meets the state standards. It's not cheap. Now, you won't take any action tonight, or do you wanna table that? Are there, are there any other roads you want VDOT to look at as far as, as traffic counts and construction costs? I've got Blue Hall Road back.
Friendship.
Friendship, the balance of, who said that?
I said friendship. I'm talking about friendship in Jones, uh, Friendship Theory, but...
Yeah, the old, uh, friendship, old Friendship Island down there. The Friendship Church Road, I think is what it's called.
Yeah, it is.
So you wanna just pass on, on adopting anything? If it's another month for the construction budget, what I'll need to do is go back to VDOT and just tell them, do you still, do you want the resolution combined with the construction budget uh, for this current year and the six-year plan? Or do you wanna go ahead and adopt the construction budget while you're doing this other? If they want you to adopt the construction budget, I'll bring it back. I'll take it to a meeting.
Don't take anything off that's on there.
Well, I mean, there's no way to add anything if we take, if, unless somebody is taking out because they, they've applied all the money. So... That'll be a vote later.
Yeah, that'll be a vote later.
Okay. All right, the, uh, the other thing I have. Um, we brought, uh, the next-gen nine-one-one proposal to, the, the migration to next-gen nine-one-one proposal back several months ago. We started talking about it. I think it was actually probably last, late summer. We, we actually started talking about it on the nine-one-one side. Uh, and this is, this is something that's moving at the state level. Uh, uh, at this point, the, excuse me, Fairfax County has a contract with AT&amp;T for this. Uh, it is a, it's, it's a statewide available contract, and the state is encouraging people to use that contract. Uh, at the same time, they, they did a, a, uh, evaluation of the county's setup in nine-one-one. Uh, and, and I think we provided you the report a few months ago. It has been updated very little in the way of changes, actually just, I think, one sentence added. Uh, but when you get down to the mini degrees, there's a few issues within our system that we would have to resolve, not major stuff, just a few little tweaks that we would have to resolve before we could migrate. And this migration isn't projected to occur until the latter part of this year, latter part of twenty-one. But at this time, our current, uh, recurring cost, uh, in the PSAP right now is approximately thirty-six hundred dollars. Uh, after we migrate to the new system, under the AT&amp;T proposal, it's gonna be just under fifty-two hundred dollars. So there's about a sixteen hundred dollar increase per month in our costs. The state, uh, will be responsible. They, they will provide funding for that sixteen hundred dollar increase for twenty-four months after the deployment is complete. They'll cover it for two years.
Okay, explain that as an increase of what?
In the cost of the, the, uh, phone cost-
Per location?
In the nine-one-one center.
Per location?
Yes. Well, for the center toll. There's an increase of sixteen hundred dollars a month in our cost to operate the nine-one-one center. The state will cover that for two years. After that two years, that's our cost. It's just gonna be that high going forward. Uh, the only other thing that's gonna come down, all of our equipment is capable of handling the migration with the exception of our hard equipment, our, our, uh, backroom equipment, the call handling equipment, or CHE as they call it. We are scheduled for an update, basically, that means replacement, in two thousand, initially they said twenty twenty-four, now they're saying twenty twenty-three. And that's gonna be a cost of roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Now, previously, the state was not putting any money toward that. But at this point in time, uh, they are, they're going to, supposedly, they are going to include in their budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we do that, if we replace that on our own individually, or two hundred thousand dollars if we do it as a group. Right now, we do our call handling equipment as a group with Wise and Dickinson in the city of Norton. So when that upgrade comes, comes about and has to be done, to upgrade that equipment in, in basically two, two and a half years, the state will supposedly have some money budgeted for grant funding to cover a good portion of that. That was not in previous. But we'll still be out, after, after deploying the next-gen nine-one-one system with AT&amp;T, um, we'll be out, after two years, we'll be out that extra sixteen hundred dollars a month, roughly twenty thousand dollars a year extra. Nothing new for nine-one-one, just to be honest. It's a technology-driven, uh, process, and everything technology is constantly updated. And because it's a twenty-four-seven system that's continually operating and handling traffic, it has, it has a lot of wear on it. Uh, so the reason I'm going and doing this tonight, I didn't get this, the last proposal until Wednesday afternoon, so there was not time to get it in the board table. But the thing that's driving this, the state needs what they're calling a proposal acceptance letter uh, by the twenty-sixth of this month in order to consider us and basically reserve funding for us in this, in this, uh, migration proposal. So we don't have to sign a contract with AT&amp;T right away. We've got a little bit of time to consider that a little bit more. The, the AT&amp;T contract that Fairfax County signed did not take into account, and it has nothing in that contract for a hosted solution like we use now. We, we transferred our nine-one-one hosting, basically, from, from having our own backroom equipment to going to a, a company that has it all, you call it, in the cloud. But they have it in a room somewhere, and it handles stuff from all over the country. But I've been told that AT&amp;T does have a solution for that. They're using it in North Carolina. It's just not in the contract that they signed with Fairfax County. So there's still some negotiating going on, trying to get something worked out to where it would apply to localities that use a hosted solution. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and recommend that you approve this proposal acceptance letter that has to be submitted to the state. It's basically a grant request for them to provide the funding for that sixteen hundred dollars and any of the other costs. It's basically a grant request for them to provide the funding for that sixteen hundred dollars and any of the other costs. There's about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of cost that they would provide toward this. Hold on just a second, that's the one portion I left. And I've had some correspondence back and forth today with Tim Addington, who's our rep for this area from the state. There's about twenty-one thousand dollars of cost that the state will cover in doing this migration in addition to that extra sixteen hundred dollars a month for two years. So, we won't see any immediate cost in two years. We'll see an increase of the sixteen hundred. And if all goes well, when we're replacing the call handling equipment, we'll have state grant funds to cover that as well. So, why ask for tonight is authority to sign and submit the proposal acceptance letter to the state.
They got a resolution number or anything?
No. It's just a one-page, well, it's a two-page letter. One page is the letter and the second page is just the information for the county.
Second, all in favor?
And outside of that, the only other thing I have is a phone session, the personal, just a couple of quick times.
Expenditures too?
Uh, yes, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Investment and fund.
Oh, yeah, okay. Before we do that, I guess we need to do reports and recommendations to the board.
Two things. One, where are we on the internet in the courtroom?
I think it's probably over there. I haven't looked, but Wales has been here. I'm not sure if he got finished or not. He's supposed to run it in right there. He may not have finished it completely, not up on top, not on the side.
Okay.
But it's, he's working on it.
All right. Other thing, can I make a motion to replace the current DSS rep from District Two with some red wine hinds?
What was it now?
Current Department of Social Services board appointment from District Two. I'm asking to replace them with some red wine hinds.
You got a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Second, Robert second.
Sure.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I don't know this person, so I'm...
No, but you got any, anything, any recommendations?
No.
I just, I just have one, I just wanna thank the board for giving confidence and real life and caring. And I appreciate definitely your confidence. Hopefully, we continue to go forward, keep working together. And I guess we'll just make a motion to go in close session.
Make a motion to go in close session, send it to two-point P, that's thirty-seven eleven, Sub A, one and six.
I'll say that, all in favor?
All right.